Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We do have a couple of board members who are on vacation, moving into a new house, so who couldn't make it, who are on Zoom, just so that everybody knows they're here. We are broadcasting YouTube Live for our view-only mode, and we have the conference bridge for those who have dialed into that, so that when we get to public participation, that they can ask questions after we have our presentation about our district instructional plan. Our first item on our agenda is our report of the chairman, and we'd like to make an acknowledgement of a donation. The Board of Education would like to acknowledge with deep appreciation a district parent. Joe, how do you say this person's name?
Anatoli Koshneff.
Okay, and his employer, Intelly Board, for donated 498 face shields to our district. I'm taking it because of the situation he has not here.
He's not here.
Okay, so we'd like to thank you so much for that huge donation. Is those for the staff, or for kids, or?
It's really for anybody, but I think it's, you know, we have purchased over $80,000 in PPE already, and this is a nice supplement. That $80,000 is, you know, what we've earmarked as about a three-month supply right now. So this helps, this helps big time. So we really appreciate Anatoli's donation.
Yes, absolutely, that's wonderful, thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you, Dave. Joe, would you like to talk about Item C and Item D, which is our notification of hire and our notification of retirement?
Absolutely, very excited to talk about a couple of hires. First, we have Joe DeVellis, who is coming over from West Hill High School to join our Special Education Department. It's kind of a welcoming home for Joe. Joe did his student teaching with us here at Massey. Actually, when I was the principal at Massey, Joe's student taught with us. Following his student teaching experience, we actually thought highly enough of him. We had not a full-time teaching position available at the time, but we had a position at the alternative school, and Joe served over there as an interventionist for the remainder of that year until he got the job at West Hill High School. And so he's with us now, back from there. So be a nice addition to our middle school Special Education Department. The next hire is Steve Swenson, who's with us here tonight. I'll have Steve come on up for a second, Steve, I'll say nice things about you. And I know his family's here. Hopefully, I say nice things about you for another 12 years.
Oh, is that what you have left you?
Exactly. Sorry, sorry. It's not by accident. Well, I have to begin, you know, before I talk about Steve, I do want to thank the committee of which Donna, Alan, and Nick all served on. It was a very comprehensive search. The committee also consisted of, we had parents, other administrators, teachers, like I said, Board of Education members, Jack and myself, secretarial staff. Very comprehensive search. Donna, Nick, Alan, myself, and Jack did a resume screening. We conducted a round of interviews with all of the instructional leaders present. And then last Thursday, we spent more than seven hours in this room, you know, with the final interviews and with deliberations, a long time. So I want to really thank everyone for doing that. Steve joins us from Windsor Locks High School, where he served as a principal there since 2014. Started his career as a math teacher in Torrington before moving to Avon thereafter, where he was both the math teacher and then became Dean of Students, I believe. He, before he started at Windsor Locks, he was a housemaster at Shelton High School. Steve earned his BA from Southeastern College, his MA in Technology in the Classroom, and his Ed Leadership degree at the University of Connecticut. As we checked up on Steve's references, I thought this quote was pretty apropos. One of his references called Steve "a learning leader who works alongside staff, parents, and students to move the school's goals forward." And actually, Sheila was not part of the hiring committee, but in the Small World Department, Steve was the, like I said, he was a housemaster in Shelton. All of Sheila's kids actually served, I'm sorry, all of Sheila's kids were part of Steve's house, and Sheila actually, you know, when I told her, I said, "Hey, do you know this guy, Steve Swenson?" She started beaming about him. I said, "Oh, I'm glad you think highly of him, because he's our new principal." So it was, you know, it was great to hear that and have that, you know, that as well from Sheila. And actually, Sheila, when Steve became the principal at Windsor Locks, Windsor Locks crew came to Shelton to talk to a committee of folks to see if, you know, if he was a nice guy. And Sheila actually served on that committee and had nice things to say for him in 2014 and nice things to say now. So we welcome Steve here as the Massey principal. I know, you know, it's not the typical transition that we would like, you know, it'd be nice if it was July 1st and we could have people in to meet him, and we're going to work around some of that stuff, and I know Steve has some plans. So I know Steve has a few words, so.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, kind of publicly thank each and every one of you. I know I met some of you during the process, and I can honestly say, as I went through the process, it was truly enjoyable. And that's kind of a strange thing, if you've gone through interview processes that have multiple rounds, and, you know, you go to an interview, you're excited about it, you meet people, and then, you know, then you wait. Then you wait some more, and then you, you know, you get another call, and then, you know, you get a storm that puts power out for seven days or eight days, and then, you know, so. But I've, you know, what I've heard about Massey, what I've heard about Monroe Public Schools, is only coming to true through the people that I've met so far. And I am so excited to be here. I did say to Joe, "At least 2032, no problem, if not longer, I will be the guy here, I have no intention of leaving." But I'm really excited to meet the staff, meet the students, meet the people, because, you know, even behind a mask, you know, it's all about, education's all about the relationships we build. So I'm looking forward to interacting with you, letting you get to know me. Some of you may like me, some of you may not. Hopefully, you all do, but we can't like everybody. But, you know, what you're getting in me is someone who's dedicated to teaching and learning. And I'm going to do everything that I can to support an excellent staff already at Massey. And, you know, I can only hope that everybody that I continue to meet is qualified and professional as the people I've already met. So thank you for this opportunity, and, you know, again, I look forward to having more personal conversations with you another time.
Thanks, you're not getting played off when I get the.
That's all right, hey, you know, it's all right.
Look at the award shows.
I don't know, I'm a second-class citizen, I get all right, it's all right. Yeah, it's all right, I'll leave. No, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Steve. And Steve actually was here today because they did administrative retreat, and Steve came, and his family is with us this evening, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't say thank you to John Batista, who jumped in, even though it was just for a very short period of time. I know John is extremely happy that we hired somebody. So thank you, and thank you, Steve. Do I have any discussion about the, oh, you didn't talk about retirement, huh?
Yeah, just a few others. I just want to follow up, just as part of the district reorganization of the leadership team, I just wanted to publicly announce, because I know the question has come up before about the STEM Director position, and Julia Strong will be serving as the Jacque Hollow Assistant Principal slash STEM Director. I can unequivocally say that Julia is one of the most capable administrators I've ever worked with, and I know she's going to be a tremendous asset in that position, and it's going to be a great fit for her and for the district. Just so we're clear on where we are with the shuffling that's going on around the district, we still have an English Instructional Leader position that was vacated when Mike became the principal at Jacque Hollow. That position will, you know, we're hoping to fill that position, and we will then have to backfill, from within our existing administrative group, an Assistant Principal at Massey, so somebody probably with instructional leadership responsibilities. So I wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that for people. Finally, in the notifications of retirement, I have to say, it's a sad day for myself and my family to hear that Anna Resha was retiring. I was one of Anna's first students back in the mid-1980s. Both my daughters had and adored Anna, they're probably one of her favorite, one of their favorite teachers. She was passionate, just as passionate about the Spanish language and culture as she was in her craft of teaching. She'll be really sorely missed, but we're going to wish her the best of luck in her retirement.
Yep, second act, both my daughters adored her, and one was supposed to have her this year for UConn Spanish, and is crushed.
Yep.
So it is a sad miss. Christine Casella just texted me, I guess, are they just hearing music on the conference bridge?
They were probably hearing that music that was playing on the conference bridge a minute ago.
Oh, so are they able to hear us? Because she was asking about, that's the text I just got, that I just looked at, she's like, "What is going on?"
Can you guys hear us? Okay, I know the music, I was trying to turn the music down.
But can the people on the bridge hear us, or no?
They can.
Okay, okay, because she was asking about that, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Jerry, a second by Dave, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Christine?
They said aye. I don't know about Christine, but.
Okay, so that's, everybody on Zoom said?
Aye.
Yes, thank you. So Christine, Shannon, and Nick on the Zoom all said aye, too, so motion passes unanimously, thank you. And did Steve's family want to leave today?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Do we have any committee reports this evening? From anybody? Anybody on Zoom have committee reports?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to our report of our Acting Superintendent. Joe, are you going to use this?
I will use that a little bit.
Okay, so I'm going to move.
Just for letter B, probably.
Okay.
So I just want to, I just want to follow up with folks. When the summer, you know, about a month ago or so, we had given out a survey to parents to find out, you know, get a lot of information, are they taking the bus, are they getting lunch, are they coming, do they want to send their kids to school and whatnot? And, you know, it's one of those things, as soon as the survey went out, and I got my first email, I'm like, ugh. You know, for some families, it was an easy decision, you know, my kid's going in, no matter what, or my kid's staying home, no matter what. But there was a lot of families that were, that were still playing it by ear, wanting to know, well, how can I answer this question if I don't know what the model is that they're going back in? So we were clear with the families and said, if, once we determine a model, we'll send that survey back out. We are still asking parents, if, you know, we're still dealing with a few people who have, you know, changed their mind or didn't have a chance to answer the survey. But we're asking, you know, so we did a follow-up survey, basically, to see if their child or their family preferred in-person learning or temporary remote learning. And just to give you a heads up of where we are, we've got about a little less, a little shy of 3,200 students in the district. I think we're at, might be a little bit over 316 students, so about 10% it seems opting for the temporary remote learning at this time. That number may spike up a little, you know, may spike up a little bit, or go down a little bit, but it seems like most of the requests that I've seen come through have been, hey, on the survey, I said in-person learning, but, you know, we're a little nervous, so we want to go to the remote. We also asked for those students who were, for transportation logistics, how they planned on getting their kids to and from school. It's really more for us to help plan for the arrivals and dismissals at each of the buildings. And we have pretty much a split right down the, right down the, right down the middle, about 50% of parents indicated that their kids, that they will be driving their kids to and from school, and about 50% saying they'll take the bus. So, you know, I think it is going to put a little pressure on us. We are staggering our start times a little bit, because mornings are going to be a little hectic, you know, with the drop-offs and whatnot. I just wanted to share, this is the only piece, I'll use the board for, I don't know if you guys are going to be able to see that, if you put yourself, I learned this today as we were doing stuff, if you put yourselves on speaker view, you might be able to see that, you might be able to see that a little bit better. I just wanted to just talk for a minute about the health indicators that the state's using to determine their recommendations. So when the governor has been saying, you know, health indicators support going back to school, you know, being in person, this is what he's talking about. There's really, the primary indicator for going back to, going back to school is the number of new COVID cases per 100,000 people per day, it's on a seven-day rolling average, too. So the metrics, and so I will be getting, I got this August 13th, I'll get my next one August 20th. The state is sending this every week, so we can keep an eye on where we are. So, you know, from a medical standpoint and a scientific standpoint, you know, the lower, obviously, the lower the number, the more it favors in-person learning. So what they have suggested is that if you're under 10, you should be moving to more in-person learning, and if you're going, if you're looking at 10 to 25, you're in the hybrid situation. If you're looking at over 25 per 100,000, that you should be in the, you know, you should be looking to be going complete distance remote. The other, there's other secondary indicators here. The secondary indicators are the percent test positivity, coupled with the new COVID hospitalizations per 100,000 people per day, and then also the percent COVID-19-like illnesses that result in emergency department visits. So we have the leading indicator, which is this, and then these other secondary indicators, and I'll share you some of those secondary indicators in a second. The, this leading indicator is also done, it's not done by town, but it's done by county. And so, like I said, every week, I'm going to be getting an update of where we are and see where we're trending. So, you know, we're starting out in the hybrid, even though, you know, some health indicators are saying, hey, it favors more in-person, but I keep saying the same thing, let's dip our toe in the water, check the temperature before we jump in and find out it's over our head. Our goal is that these health indicators remain positive or improve, and we can get back to a full transition of students back in school. So if you look at the counties, the counties listed here, you know, Fairfield County, well, it's the highest county in the, in the state, we're still at about 2.6. So health indicators Connecticut has done, has been pretty conservative in its approach to COVID, and we've done a pretty nice job in keeping that low. Now, is this, you know, could this change? We're going to find out. Like I said, I'll get this, I'll get this report every, every week. So here are those other, you know, the percent of positive tests by county by week, you know, as long as we keep seeing graphs like this, where it's trending down here, that's pretty good. All three of these graphs are pretty good. That's the new hospitalizations, you'd have to look at it really closely, I'll just give you a helicopter view. So, so those are the, those are the three, you know, those are the three, I'm sorry, the three secondary indicators for that. So I just wanted to share that with you. When the governor's talking about what are the health indicators that are being used, those are the, those are the things that are happening. Now, we also, like I said, we want to test the waters first. We also, you know, I have to take this information, and I have to juxtapose it with our capacity to, you know, do the two big things. We know that we can have kids wash their hands and sanitize, whatever, but the two big ones are cohorting and socially distancing our students. You know, we can cohort most effectively at the, at the elementary school, but it's not perfect, because you have kids that are going to be on a bus, and then in a bike, and I'm sorry, in a bus, and then in a classroom. So you're going to have two different, you know, you're going to be mixing cohorts there. More difficult at the middle school level, where they're on teams, but they're changing classes. And then at the high school, it's impossible to cohort the kids. Social distancing as well, if we have all kids, you know, with our, you know, with the school at approximately half-capacity, we are pretty close, I'm pretty comfortable to say, that if we're not at six feet, we're pretty close to six feet around the district in every school. We bring every kid back, and we're at, you know, you know, we're at three feet, maybe. So, you know, we have to, we're taking into account those, those couple of factors as well. So that's why we've chosen the approach that we have. My next piece is just an update from the schools. I want to thank Sheila, who's going to be coming up in a little bit, and just, she put out the instructional plan and her work with the administrative team, the instructional leaders. It has sample schedules that are out Friday. I know there's a lot of information in that, in that packet that went out. This week, the principals, because a lot of what Sheila sent out are sample plans, this week, the principals will be sending out specific information regarding some of the logistics to their own individual schools. But what I've asked them to do is to give a little highlight of some of the experiences that students and families can expect for this year. So we'll start with, at the high school, with John, and we'll kind of work our way down.
Well, I'm excited to be talking about Massey and what's happening, and I'm more excited that Steve is here. He wanted to talk, but he didn't really know where the halls were yet, so we're going to give him, we're going to give him a break on that. First, with some logistics about Massey and the opening, you know, we're starting with 1,021 students. So far, 65 students have said they're, that they want to do the remote, temporary remote learning, so that's about 6% of our students saying that. But we're ongoing. Julia's looking at schedules every day to kind of balance classes, now that we know the hybrid model, so she's balancing the classes, so it's working out very well. But we're going to do things like use tape in the hall to indicate arrows. With the hybrid model, we really believe the halls are big enough for kids to walk down two ways, except one area, and it's the area over there where four halls come together. So that area will have some one-way signs for students, and so we're putting those around, too. So, you know, some students might have to walk a little, little further to get to classes, but we want to make sure we can keep that distance apart. We removed desks from classrooms, so that we're not having, you know, in the past, we might have had 27, 28 kids in a class, so we moved, we removed some desks, so that there'll be plenty of room for social distancing. If you go by the cafeteria, you'll see there's no cafeteria tables, and, you know, again, that's by design, because kids in those cafeteria tables would sit really close to one another. So they, we moved the table and we put desks there, so students will be able to eat and be distant. And the same thing with the library. If you look at the library, you know, we, we are using some tables, but we're using those barriers to help with some distancing and things. And we're going to tape off seats in the auditorium. We've also added a lunch wave, so now there's less kids in lunch. And what we're encouraging parents to do, and we're talking about it in the letter that we're sending out, is to use the MySchool Bucks, so we're not using cash. We want them to be able to buy their lunch that way. Of course, we'll use cash if they have it, but we really are encouraging people to not have to go back and forth. We are getting a tent, and the Central Office Administration heard what we were talking about, so I think both schools, middle and high school, are getting a tent. The tent is going in the parking lot, right outside the gym. It's a 30-by-30 tent, it'll fit at least one classroom of students, but that's going to be the overflow for lunch. So, you know, we do have more kids for lunch than will fit in the cafeteria, so they'll be able to go in the overflow there. We're going to use the tent for mass breaks. Teachers will be able to sign out the tent to bring their classes in nice weather, so we're trying to, we're trying to do everything we can. If you look out there in the courtyard, there's tents out there, we're experimenting a little bit with that. So we're looking for other areas for teachers to go to. Fresh Fest is this week, as you remember, we brought all the kids in for Fresh Fest, they learn about Massey High School. It's going to be a little different this year. Julia set it up so that on Thursday, it'll be virtual, and then on Friday, there'll be small groups. Kids are signing up in groups of 10, and they're going to be able to still do a tour, because we know that the freshmen need to feel comfortable walking around the building, so we want to be able to do that. And along with the letter that Steve is sending out today or tomorrow, is, they've also, Mark and Mike Crowley, they've done a video. They've produced a video that'll go out next week to the parents, so that they can have like a walkthrough. What does it look like in your classes? What does it look like when you walk through the hall? What does lunch look like? So we're going to give the parents that information. As far as teaching and learning, which is what we're really about, we're doing some different things for that, too, to help in social distancing. Students will arrive a bit later. If you remember, if you saw the letter, they're going to arrive at 7:15 to 7:40, and so we're going to stagger the buses, so that nobody's waiting outside or waiting in the hall. As soon as they get into the building, they're going to go to their classrooms. Teachers will be on, in their classrooms for first period by 7:15, so the kids will walk right there, directly to first period. And that's really important, because if you've ever been to Massey in the morning, they hang out in the cafeteria, they hang out in the hallway, we're going to encourage, the cafeteria's going to be locked, but we're going to encourage them to move along. We're doing a block scheduling, a block schedule, 74-minute classes, which means there's only three transitions, because the period's 1, 2, 3, 4, so there's only three transitions, so there's not a lot of kids in the hall at a lot of times, it's only three times. So, and teachers at Massey have been preparing for the block, not just for the COVID, pre-COVID, they've been preparing for the block, so they understand, they've had some professional development on the block, so they're going to continue to do that. The open campus that Mr. Cobb talked about last meeting is part of Massey's plan. Students, well, Julia has tried to schedule students so that in the beginning of the day or the end of the day, there's more students who have free time, so that they could actually leave with parent permission, always with parent permission, and they're not, they'll be able to do that. One of the things that I'm going to talk about, not just for Massey, but K-12, is our theme for our professional development next week. And really, it was a thoughtful plan. It's starting with social-emotional learning, so the teachers are going to learn how to talk to their kids and work with kids to make sure those kids are okay, because remember, this is a big transition back to school, so we want to make sure our kids are okay, we want to make sure our teachers are okay. So we're going to have a whole day on social-emotional learning, then technology is a day. And today, we started with the administrators and looking at ways to, ways to deliver instruction using technology, so that's going to be a whole day talking about technology. Then lesson design, you know, we're going to have students at home and students in school. What are the lessons going to look like? How do we want to design lessons so that everybody gets what they, what they need in order to be successful? And then the last day will be assessment. What does grading look like? What's the attendance policy look like? Because now it's a new normal, what are we doing with that? And then finally, in health and safety, you know, mask breaks are going to be something that we're really looking at. Hopefully, they're going to use outside in the tent and the courtyards. We already met with the nurses to talk about protocols, and they're coming actually tomorrow to train the administrators on some of these protocols, and so we'll be able to all be trained, what's the isolation room look like, who's going to be there, how we're going to help that. You know, there's barriers. These barriers are, teachers in teachers' classrooms are in the library, they're in the cafeteria, they're around desks, and we're just trying to create these barriers. A mask, the plastic barriers, we have face shields, Jack has bought a lot of face shields, and hand sanitizer and disinfectants for every classroom, so health and safety is really foremost on our mind. And, you know, we've done a lot of discussing and a lot of talking about the social-emotional health of our students and our staff, and that's going to be a large part of our PD. And at some point soon, we're going to get back to teaching and learning in our curriculum, but first, for the first couple of days, we're going to focus on how our kids are doing. Because, again, we got to make sure our kids are okay, so that they can get to the learning. So the first couple of days for all of us is going to be focusing on what's best for kids, how can we help them, what supports do they have? And it's taken us a long time to get here, but we want to make sure we do it right, so we're doing a lot with social-emotional learning. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
So John talked a lot about the stuff we're doing K-12, too, like all the health and safety protocols are K-12 through everything, so I don't want to repeat. But specifically for Jacque Hollow, we have 767 students right now enrolled. We had 68 opt for voluntary remote learning, so that's 9%. It's 27 students at STEM, which is 12%, and it's 41 students at main campus, and that's 8% at main campus. So, you know, right there on the 9% average. I was really happy we were able to schedule a sixth-grade locker orientation for the end of this week. I know there was a lot of anxiety about those fifth graders coming in, they hadn't been able to see the building. So, very much like Fresh Fest, they signed up in, for 30-minute blocks, 10 students with one adult to come in and see the sixth-grade hallway and to practice their locker. So we're going to start that on Thursday. It's going to be at main campus on Thursday and Friday, and up at STEM on Friday. And the guidance counselors will be here also to meet them. In addition to the video that Mark and I made, Laura and Julie and I are putting together a sixth-grade orientation video to walk through the building, so they know, try to answer. to walk through the building so they know, try to answer all their questions before they get here. But I already worked on lesson plans with the sixth grade teachers. What does that first day in school need to look like for these kids to walk them through the building? So they know right from the get-go what happens. And how do we handle the kids that are at home? What kind of little task can we do for them while we're doing the in-school tour? And then it will flip when they're in on Thursday. That cohort is on Thursday. Great teachers came in and volunteered to refresh all the bulletin boards. And Adrian Zimmer and Joanne Suppan really pitched in so that there's brand-new bulletin boards of positive messaging throughout the building for them. So that when they come in on Thursday, they'll see very welcoming messages for them. Over the course of the summer, I did host three drop-in family Zooms, which was great. I got a lot of good advice from parents and a lot of questions about the opening. But a lot of food for thought that helped Laura and I really make some plans for what's going to happen. And we also hosted 10 students in a Zoom last week to ask them, what do you need from us, you know, as you come back to school? And it's funny, a lot of them said, don't talk about COVID all the time, you know? It was like, so we knew when we wanted to do these bulletin boards, let's focus on being in school. Let's focus about getting back to some normalcy. And, you know, we definitely have to have our protocols up, but be more focused on them being kids and them being in school. So we have signage and markers. Like you said, we are looking at designing the outdoor space. We have our tents. We're asking all students to have a beach tile that they bring in or a cushion to bring in and throw in their locker so we can go outside with them during the course of the day. They can sit and have some outdoor time also. That would be helpful. And we are running no home rooms at the beginning of the day, trying to cut back on classrooms and staggering class times. And we're cohorting all our UAs as much as we possibly can to cohort the kids at the middle school. So we're excited to get them back though. Can't wait till Thursday. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone want to kick us off for the elementaries? Kelly?
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you in real life. So Monroe Elementary has had a reopening committee sort of running simultaneously to the district reopening committee. We've been working on a lot of things. The most recent thing we've been doing is our cohorts. So we had these really great class placements that took us weeks to do in the spring. We had them together. And then when we moved to the cohorts, you know, it didn't work out as neatly as we would have liked. So in some cases, we had a class of 24, but the A through K and L through Z brought us to 17 and 7 or 12 and 5 or something like that. So we had to really take a close look at those, look at boys versus girls, make sure that children still had friends in their cohorts, things like that. So we've sent the last week or so, so we're reorganizing cohorts, asking some families in some cases to switch their cohort if we needed that. Our cohort ranges are running from like about 8 to 12. We do have one class of 14 because that's one of our bigger grade levels. But otherwise, they're in that 8 to 12 range, which is a good size. We have some priority access students, excuse me, who we identified as students who are going to come into both cohorts. So they're going to come in for the four days a week. And those families already know that they're a priority access student, either because they're a special needs student or a 504 student. We have 26 remote learners from Monroe Elementary for K-5, and we have two preschoolers. We have two students who have withdrawn completely in our homeschooling, and we have one more pending. Similar to other schools, we have the custodians who have been, you know, polishing the hallways. We have our tape on the floors and, you know, things marked ready to go in that way. We are going to be bringing in some students to visit before the first day of school, either because their learning profile or something about their social emotional needs suggests that it'd be good for them to see the building before they get there. Doing the same as the other school, having outdoor spaces with beach towels. We're having PTO organize some tents so we can get some tents on our site and we can have as much outdoor space as possible. The YMCA is going to be coming to do after-school care. So they're sort of hitting the ground running on the first day of school. In addition to that, we're encouraging them to help families on the days when they're, it's their off-cohort day, if they can provide some daycare opportunities for families. But they're looking right now at an outdoor facility and they're hoping to get approval for that so that they could do that. We're hoping to get some mask lanyards for kids because, so kids, picture this. They're walking down the hallway because they need to have their masks on, but then they get to recess and they can take their mask off. We're trying to figure out what are they doing with those masks when that happens? So we have, they have like these lanyards that they have two little clips on them and you can clip your mask to your lanyard instead of just sort of tossing it into a bag or something. So we're looking into that. We are going to be offering a Google Classroom tutorial for parents. We have a bunch of incoming, obviously, you know, kindergarten parents and some that are new to our district that aren't familiar with Google Classroom. And they're going to have to hit the ground running on day one. So we're going to offer them that tutorial at some point. And then mainly, we're just going to make some videos. I'd like to make a video of myself without my mask on so these new students can see what we look like, you know, regularly. It's going to be hard the very first day having kindergartners in front of you and them not being able to see your smile or you being able to give them a hug or something when they're, you know, separating from their parents. So that's something that we're handling. But mostly, although we're approaching this year with a little bit of angst and nerves, we're just so excited to see the kids again. So I think I would speak for everybody that we're really excited to see everyone. That's pretty much it.
Thanks, Cal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I agree with Kelly. It really is nice to be here in person for a change instead of on the other side of a screen. So I'm happy to share a little bit of information about Font Hollow. We too had a reopening committee that was running almost simultaneously to the district-wide committee. It was about 25 to 30 staff members. We had a good cross-section of viewpoints. We had office staff. We had paraeducators. We had classroom teachers, specials area teachers, of course, myself, the school nurse, and our school security officer. So it was a great committee. We worked hard. Much of our work centered around social distancing and really looking to maximize the space between the children at school. As Joe mentioned earlier, we felt at the elementary level that we had a good handle on cohorting because the children are in their safe classroom area virtually all day with a few exceptions. So we really looked at five big areas when we talk about social distancing. We looked at arrival and dismissal. We looked at classroom layout. We had a committee that focused on transition times and use of the bathroom so that we could make sure there were only a few kids going in at one time. We talked a little bit about indoor and outdoor recess, knowing that it would be a welcome break for the children, but that we had to keep them safe and together as a pod. And the last big topic we talked about was morning announcements and how we still would run them and how we wanted to incorporate social and emotional wellness messages into them. So arrival and dismissal centered around creating a new pickup policy at the end of the day because, as you know, parents are not going to be able to come into the building. We will have the children in the classrooms and we have a system for finding out what cars are there. And we'll send the children out to the cars after they've been checked and identified. So it will take a little bit longer than usual, but safety first. And we're really pleased with our plan. We talked about classroom layout and the teachers really making an effort to limit the material sharing in the classroom. And some of their conversation focused around our classroom libraries and effectively using our classroom libraries. They talked about creating book baggies and they talked about setting up the desks. So it's A-B, A-B. So there'd be an empty desk in between children. They talked about using whiteboards. And they looked at math and figured out ways to limit the material sharing with regard to manipulatives. Transition time and bathroom use. Normally, when we're thinking of our community bathrooms, we would not have to worry so much about children going in there. But with social distancing, we wanted to make an effort to really limit it to three. So we decided to give each child a clothespin that would be labeled. They take the clothespin and they clip it onto a board outside the bathroom. When there are three clothespins on the, the little clipboard, that means the bathroom is full. And they would have to wait outside the bathroom socially distanced from one another. When we talked about indoor and outdoor recess, we talked about lanyards. At this time, we're not planning on giving lanyards, but what we did talk about is encouraging parents to send their children in with a small baggie that, that seals. And we would have tables set up outside so that each cohort could put their mask in a sealed bag if they didn't need it at recess. So if they were going to be able to be six feet apart, that they could store their, their face masks there. I talked about morning announcements. Oh, we also did want to use as much outdoor space as possible, like Massey had indicated, like Kelly had indicated. And so we thought we would map out different zones on our campus. They would be labeled on a map and each teacher would have the ability to sign out, to visit a zone at a specified time each day so that we could ensure not everybody was getting to the same shady tree at the same time. We have about 60 students at last count that have opted for temporary voluntary remote learning. We have about 597 students, although it keeps going up minute by minute. Tomorrow, I wouldn't be surprised if we hit the 600 mark. And we do also have floor markings because children at Font Hollow will be staying to the right. We're not able to do one-way traffic, but we have arrows set up to help them remember. Gloria Ganino, our school nurse, and I, along with Alyssa Whitmore, created a video. We're in the process of editing it a bit. It's rather silly, but the children do get to see us without our face masks on. And we do get to show them how to properly put their face mask on, how to take it off, things to think about if we're able to use our refillable water stations. We do have face masks, wipes, and sanitizers in each classroom. And we do have clear dividers to use at places where there will be more than one child at a table, like in an art room. Our next steps are just to welcome the children with open arms. We cannot wait to see them on September 1st.
Thanks, Lee.
Good evening, everyone. And we'll let the new guy talk so much? I guess he's the old guy. I don't know. Again, we also had a reopening committee at Stepney. We did, took a lot of the protocols and procedures similar to the other schools. We are at 430 students plus. We keep adding students every day. I think we added another dozen last week. We did have what I would consider a fairly large number of students opt out, and that's 67. So it's 15%. Again, as more and more information comes out, I believe that number will go down. And I, I, along with Kelly and Lee, we are making our class, our classes public on Thursday morning. So parents have, do not know who their teachers are. So we're putting that out through Power School. Again, like the others said, all our students are going to be in class cohorts. Our rooms have all been cleaned and reset with all the desks separated. There will be marks on the floor so the desks go back at the end of the night so they go to the same spot. Any excess furniture we have in our classrooms has all been either removed, taken home, or put into a storage unit outside. That, we were trying to create more social distance within the classrooms. So the students, as they alternate sitting in desks, will have more room to move around the, the classroom and still not encroach on anybody six feet. All of our students will be eating in classrooms to start the school year. People can order lunch. They get a two-item choice. It could be a turkey and cheese sandwich and a bagel or a ham and cheese sandwich and a, or a bagel. Lunches will be delivered to classrooms. So there's really nothing in the cafeteria itself, although we have set it up and I assume the other elementaries have as well. We've set up a classroom inside the cafeteria. If the music teacher is singing and they are singing without masks, they have to be 12 feet apart and not just six feet apart. So that would enable singing in the music class. Again, like the others, markings have been, have been or will be put on all the floors and the hallways to direct traffic and eliminate any congestion in the hallways. Students will stay with their cohort in one area when it comes to recess. So recess, if there's three classes, one will be on the playground equipment, one will be on the field, one will be on the blacktop. And they'll rotate. And they need to wash prior to going out and as they return back in from recess. Like Kelly mentioned, wipes, sanitizers, masks are all available in all classrooms. All student staff will be wearing masks, obviously. Students and staff will be encouraged to use outdoor classroom, which we have up off our, our blacktop area up in the top near the gym. It's a full outdoor classroom. There is a whiteboard that can be rolled out of the gym so students, teachers can teach right there. You could probably sit, I could probably, if you sat one next to another, you'd probably sit about 36 people. So there's room easily to social distance for about 18 people. We also have an outdoor learning area in the garden, the garden area, which is an open area. And I just had a boy scout do his Eagle Scout project. He built a picnic table. He cleaned out all our flower beds and replanted them. And then he brought in, he built four growing stations out in the garden area. So students can go out and plant and then transfer over to the garden area. And we do have a tent that can go in that area too. So it'll suffice beautifully for a mask break or to go out and watch some of the seeds grow and things like that. So I'm excited about that. And they're in different parts of the building, which is great, one for the upper grade, one for the lower grade. There's going to be the teaching of proper logistics of hand washing, wipes, cleaning, masks, et cetera, similar to what the others have, have mentioned. And all these protocols will be shared with staff through our professional development, which begins next Monday and runs through August 31st. I thank you for your time and I hope you have a great 2020, 2021 school year.
Thanks, Bruce.
Does any of the board members have questions for any of our principals on this?
Just one. Maybe it's more of a policy, but when we do have classes outside, are we going to require masks in the same?
If we can, if, the question was, if, if we have classes outside or we still don't require masks, I think the expectation is if we can, if we can maintain more than six feet of distance, they can take their masks off outside.
Anybody else? David?
Joe, quick question about grading. Are we going back to traditional grading?
We're going back to traditional grading. And there's a lot, a lot of conversation about that. A lot of professional development that's going to have to happen because it's a tricky, it's a tricky thing with some kids at home on a particular day. I think we have to really reexamine what assessment looks like. But yeah, for all intents and purposes, the traditional grading will be reinstated.
Does any of our board members on Zoom have any questions?
I'm offset. Very informative presentations. Thank you all so much.
Okay, great. All right, Joe.
Can I get some clarification on, for all intents and purposes, the grading is traditional? Like, is it just unknown right now? Or what are, what are your thoughts behind that?
No, it was just a matter of speech. It's, it's going back to our traditional way of grading.
Okay.
What I, what I meant is we're going to have to really, so for example, if you have a test and some of your kids are in class and some of your kids are at home, you know, there's concerns amongst the teaching staff of, in terms of what does, you know, how do we assess those kids? And how can we ensure that they're, you know, they're on an even playing field, you know? The kids at home might have access to resources that the kids in the class won't. So the teachers are really going to have to look at their assessments and how they, and how they grade kids. But in terms of our grading system, going back to kids getting, you know, numerical grades for the work that they produce and getting zeros for works that they don't, that they don't produce, that will be, that will be reinstated. It's not going to, it's not going to be pass/fail. It's going to be numerical grades.
Well, Joe, that's great because that's kind of what I'm hearing from students as well. Like it's different if you're there for the instruction versus home, if you're there for the test versus home.
Yeah.
And so it's, the teachers are thinking along those lines too. And just, Wednesdays are pretty even, right?
They are. They are.
Is it, because in the past, like in our, pre-COVID, like Fridays were a really common test day for a lot of subjects?
Sometimes, yeah.
Joe, Joe, just one question. Just for the people who are, you know, watching and, and there, all the parents especially. We have, because since I served on the reopening committee, even though we're starting in hybrid, we have plans to transition to remote or to in-person. I think the transition to in-person is easier, but we do have plans to transition to and operate in remote for all the buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
It is like, it's kind of like an average of maybe 10% per building that's doing the remote full-time pretty much?
That's correct.
And that kind of coincides with your first survey as well, I think?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continue on.
Ron, do you want to walk us through the year-to-date budget report? So included in your pack was the year-to-date budget report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Currently, there are three open purchase orders. So it's a pretty tight number at this point. And it's, you know, it's, there's a projected surplus of 372,000. And as we discussed last month, you know, COVID, give it and COVID will take it away, you know? So next, next year is going to be, the current year is going to be a bit of a challenge. Now, having said that, we do have a meeting coming up later this week with SEDEXO, which could impact this number. So.
When is our contract up with them?
So we will, I believe we'll be going out for an RFP this fall. So it's one more year.
That's correct.
It is, yeah.
And I think we're also discussing how we can put this 372... And I think we're also discussing how we can put this 372 into a fund so that that may be possibly available.
Yeah, so there is a Board of Finance meeting Thursday, so that is one of the discussions that'll be had.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of needs. I mean, we, like I said, you know, Jack has done a yeoman's, you know, put in a yeoman's effort getting the, you know, ordering PPE and trying to figure out the logistics of all that. But we've spent about 80,000, you know, we spent $80,000 on that first set of, of PPE. And that was basically for a projection of three months' worth, worth of stuff. We know that there are going to be, you know, we faced the possibility of some significant staffing needs with this, for, especially for staff with underlying, you know, possible conditions. So, you know, any kind of staffing expenditures are obviously going to eat into, you know, eat into our, our budget very quickly.
Does anybody have questions for Ron about the 2019, actually 2020 budget?
2020.
Yeah, 2020. All right. Continue on, Joe.
All right. I just put dues and fees on the, on the agenda. I just wanted to talk about, you know, we approved dues and fees, and, you know, obviously, things have changed. I would suggest that, you know, without having to go back in and totally redo all of our dues and fees, one in particular, you know, seems inherently unfair. I know it's something, you know, none of us enjoy doing, but the, the parking passes are normally $125, you know, for a student, you know, for a parking pass. Kind of hard to justify that when kids are going to be driving 40% of the time to school. They're going to be driving two, two days a week. So, one of the things that we're suggesting is, you know, make it, you know, cut it down to 40%. So, it would be, we're going to do it on a semester basis, just to see where we are. Hopefully, you know, we're, we're back in full-time, but 20, at $25 a semester for now, which would get us to $50 for the year, which would be, which would be 40%. But, you know, we thought that was the fair and reasonable thing. And the reason to also do it by semester is, you know, you know, God forbid, we find ourselves in a situation where we are, we're out of, we're out of school. You know, we're not having to, you know, write a whole bunch of refund, you know, refund checks back out to parents. The other one.
Wait, Joe, Jay has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you explain to the audience again what those fees are used for? Like, I know they're used for lining, but can you explain?
Yep, all the fee, the, the only thing, and we've always held steadfast on this, the only thing that the, the parking fees are used for is for the maintenance of the, of the driveway. So, as you noticed, if you drove in tonight, that the, the main driveway coming up to the guard shack has been milled. It is supposed to get paved this week. That, that driveway's been in pretty rough shape.
I think they're going to start tomorrow, actually.
Good. Yep, good. They're going to hopefully have that done tomorrow. So, you know, all that, the, the funding for all that comes from the driveway. And other years, that pays for, if there's any resealing, if there's any cracking. We have curb repair that needs to be done every year, because the, you know, this, you know, it's a big driveway, the snowplows hit the curbs when we get, you know, snowstorms, restriping of the, of the driveways. A couple of years ago, we reconfigured the driveway, and, you know, all of that was, was done with, you know, revenue from the, from the parking fees. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Part of this project actually required quite a bit of new drainage work.
Yeah, this, you're right, yeah.
Pipe was rotted.
The, the other, you know, the other thing, just as, you know, as, as more of a, you know, a heads-up for folks here and something else that we've looked at is, is surcharges. You know, we did agree to a surcharge of $300. I don't know, quite honestly, it could be a moot point, this conversation, because I don't know where, where sports are going to land right now. They were supposed to start today with football, and then that's, if you followed any of it, any of the saga in the, in the state, and you see what's going on in other states. Some people have moved fall sports completely off to the spring. Some people have delayed the start of them. Some people are playing some now and some later. We'll see where that all, all lands. We know that there's going to be, you know, some potential savings in, in sports, even if they're played on a limited, on a limited basis. You know, obviously, if you're playing fewer games, you have lower transportation costs, lower costs for officials, crowd control, and police. But, there's also a loss of revenue. And, you know, the, the big hit is going to be in our sports where we have gate proceeds. I don't know where we're going to, I don't know where we're going to end up, but as of right now, you know, the CIEC is recommending no spectators, but they're kind of leaving it up to the individual schools. I'm hoping, we were hoping that the CIEC would just make a rule on what it is, because, you know, when you do these things, you know, how come I can go to Pennell and my whole family can go, but I go to Massey and no one could go, or only two people can go? We don't know where that's, where that's going to, where that's going to wind up. But it'll definitely be restricted, restricted spectators, if any at all. So, you know, we have kind of some, you know, some rough numbers. We also are concerned, I talked to John DeGenaro today, you know, because the seasons may be interrupted, or they may be shortened, or we're going to, and with COVID in general, we have, you know, a good number of kids who just aren't coming to school. You know, we, you know, I can't say we'll, we expect to see a dip in participation, but we very well might. So, as of right now, we're going to just keep a close eye on it, but we're not going to, I don't recommend making any changes at this, at this point right now.
Joe, when you have your Zooms with the other school superintendents, have they mentioned what they're doing with fees? I mean, I know it could be a moot point. I got it. I got, it could be canceled for us.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has talked about changing their, changing their fees yet, yeah. A lot of them would like to get school in before we start talking about sports, quite honestly.
Can I ask a question regarding sports and students who are actually opted out for remote learning? So, if you've opted for the temporary remote learning, but you play a fall sport, will those students be permitted to play the fall sport if they're in temporary remote learning?
Talked, this has been a, a subject of conversation with both the Southern Fairfield County superintendents and the Western County superintendents, that we've, we've all gone and we've kind of reached consensus that we are going to allow those, those students to play. Knowing that, you know, at first, my, you know, my, my initial gut reaction was why, you know, if they can't be in school, why, you know, why should they be allowed to play? But, you know, for some, for some families, you know, it may not be the student's decision to be staying home in the first place, and it might be a situation where they have to help care for younger siblings in, in the house. So, you know, we are, at this point, we're going to allow them to participate. The last piece, I, I think it's my last piece.
Nope, you are only on F summer work.
Yep. Oh, yeah, no, I'm not on one. Oh, jeez. Pages got crossed up here. Yeah, just summer work. I just want to, I just want to thank the custodians for, you know, all the work that they've done to get the buildings reopened. You know, we're going to have to restructure some of the, some of their schedules and responsibilities once schools, once school starts to, you know, maintain the high expectations of cleanliness that are going to be necessary during this health crisis. So, you know, I think we are going to be in a good position, you know, because we have pretty significant restrictions on building use after school. A lot of times, our custodians are working around different organizations that are, that are using the buildings. A lot of our after-school activities will probably be remote to start the year. So, we should be able to pull in some of our evening custodians to do some of that. You know, people call it deep cleaning. You think people are putting on hazmat suits. Deep cleaning means that we're hitting those high-touch areas more frequently, the, the, the banisters, the doorknobs, the faucets and stuff like that. But we'll be able to get those, we'll be able to get the custodians in a little bit earlier to, to do that work. You know, just as we talk about this as well, both Bill Droscow, our manager of Buildings and Grounds, and all of our head custodians have participated in a number of webinars throughout the summer hosted by the State of Connecticut in collaboration with the Department of Public Health and different, different organizations. Looking at a couple of things, you know, ways that we can enhance the efficiencies of our air handling units, which is a, a big, a big concern for staff. And also, looking at different ways to implement best, best practices for cleanliness in the building. The administrative retreat, I have to say, John hit the high, the highlights when, when we, when he talked before. We met today for the first, not for the first time, but for our first day of our administrative retreat to kind of come up with the priorities of our district as we go into this year. And one of those priorities, or really the two biggest priorities, is that's the social-emotional well-being of our students and just as importantly, is our staff as, as we come back from this pandemic. We know that people have faced trauma, stress, anxiety. There's, people are, you know, some people are nervous, are scared, they, you know, their, their emotions are all over the place. And we want to be able to provide them with the coping strategies and mechanisms they need to deal with any of this trauma that they've experienced. We also looked at instruction. I know Sheila is going to talk about instruction in a few minutes, but, you know, we want to, you know, we know that when we went off in March, you know, we know it was emergency remote learning or whatever you want to call it, you know, we had a week to kind of cobble something together and get started. You know, we were, we were looking to ways to improve and maximize our effectiveness in this new normal. We have, you know, in many ways, our classrooms are going to be structured in a way that does not really facilitate the, the educational philosophy that we've embraced over the last 30 years. We're, we're going back to the 1950s with kids sitting in straight rows and, you know, the, the lack of, you know, you know, just the physical limitations for collaboration and communication are, are going to be different, are going to be difficult. But, how do we then leverage the, the, you know, mitigation strategies that we've put in place? How do we best leverage our technology to help meet the needs of all of our students? So, we were doing some of that work today. I, I'm asking any parent who is on right now, watching, please be patient with us in the beginning of the year. We, we did three takes today at a lesson. It got better every time. We are going to keep working on it. That's what our PD is for. We're going to hit social-emotional learning. We're going to hit, we're going to hit instruction. Those, those extra days are going to, are going to be critical for us as we, as we work out the bugs. There's going to be bugs, technology. We all know it's great until it stops working or until something drops and falls. I was just checking to make sure these, these folks are still on. They are. So, you know, we have those extra days in the beginning of the year, and then we also have the early dismissal days where the teachers, you know, I think those days are going to be really, really telling, because it's one thing to, to practice it and do it, and then get the kids in front of you and do it. It's going to be interesting, and, you know, we're going, it's early dismissal for the students. The teachers will stay on and collaborate and continue to work to kind of fine-tune this thing. And, and we'll hear more about the, about the program when, when Sheila comes up next. The last thing I just wanted to just keep everyone apprised of was, we are currently in negotiations with the secretaries, and we have the administrative, the administrator negotiations coming. I spoke to Lisa Peterson, the president of Masse, about, you know, hopefully doing those negotiations, you know, let us hopefully get into school and, you know, sit down, sit down with those folks. And I believe Nick is, is serving as the Board of Education rep for the, for those negotiations.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Joe before we move on to Sheila doing the school reopening plan presentation? All right, Sheila, come on up.
Joe, do you have the, the first? Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How are we? I kind of echo what everyone has said. It's kind of nice to see everybody in person and then trying to figure out on which page is all our board members at our meetings, as I always scroll through for Joe. So, last Friday, we sent out our district instructional plan for fall of 2020. And it has been a collaborative effort from the people sitting behind me and the other administrators who aren't here. The secondary instructional leaders and the administrators are the ones who helped put this whole thing together. As you know, you know, through multiple communications from Mr. Cobza, there are three models of instruction that the state has kind of asked us to put in place for students. One is in-person. That is our typical school day where kids are in classes. Unfortunately, with everything going on right now, we would also have to, if we were in person, it would be with all of the social distancing guidelines, which would make some changes to some of our curriculum, some of our schedules and things like that. Then we have the hybrid model, which is the one that Monroe is going with to have half of our students in, roughly. And then there's that full-distance learning model. With the first two, in-person and the hybrid, parents have the option of voluntarily choosing to have temporary remote learning at home. And as the principals have said, there is about 10% across the district that have asked for that. When you look at the hybrid learning model, we have two cohorts. Cohort A is last names A through K. They will be in-person learning Mondays and Tuesdays. So, that means they are actually physically in the classroom with their teachers. Cohort B will be physically in school on Thursdays and Fridays. Cohort, Cohort A will be home learning Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and Cohort B will be home learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So, as you can see, Wednesdays, everybody is home learning. Attendance for all students whether they are in school or at home will be tracked on a daily basis. Obviously, the ones who are in school, it's quick and easy for the teacher to see who's actually sitting in front of them. For the students who are home, the teacher will still be doing attendance, because it will be live or synchronous times throughout the day. Elementary schools will have different times, and we'll take a look at that when I take a look at their schedule, that they'll be checking in with the students who are home for synchronous learning. Where secondary from 6 through 12, students will actually be getting on at each class. So, they'll be synchronous learning for every period of their day. So, we're going to take a look at some of the schedules. This is Massey High School's black schedule. So, they have the students set up with red days and white days for periods 1 through 4 for a red day, 5 through 8 for a white day. And on Wednesdays, that's going to be, you know, they're kind of looking at all their schedules to try and figure out exactly what the bell schedule will look like and which periods they'll go to, because they want to put in some of that social-emotional learning classes specifically in there, too. When I take a look at the middle school, this is Jackie Hollow Main Campus. There are five different lunch periods set up throughout the day. So, students can have lunch anywhere from roughly 11 o'clock to roughly 1 o'clock. When I look here on the left-hand side, this is STEM schedule. And they, so you see that they start earlier than Main Campus. But if you look at the chart on the right, that's the Wednesdays. And STEM and Main Campus will be starting at exactly the same time. And that start time is roughly in the middle between when STEM starts compared to when Main Campus starts. Here's a sample of Vaughn Hollow and Stepney. They start a little bit later than Monroe Elementary, which we'll look at next. But if you look at this schedule, you'll see that it starts with a school-wide morning message, which is what the schools were doing from March until June. But a little bit different in how we're coming back this year is that the students in the classrooms will have a morning meeting. And the morning meeting will be synchronous. So, the students who are home will be online. It'll roll right into, in kindergarten through second grade, the phonics lesson for the day. And in grades 3 through 5, it'll roll right into the reading lesson. And then at another time during the day, somewhere in that next 90-minute block for language arts, the teachers will get on synchronously with the students for reading or writing. Then there'll be a special, so the students will go to their special area. Then they'll have recess and lunch. Then they'll get on for math, and again, it's synchronous at the beginning of the lesson. We want that mini lesson, that core instructional time, to be synchronous with everybody. And then you have the break in there for their wind time and then science or social studies. So, when I go to look at Monroe, well, it starts a little earlier, but it's the same basic schedule. When I, you look back at the middle school and the high school, they're going period by period. So, when they go to English class, they're going to get online synchronous with the teacher for that initial instruction. Depending on the class, the students at home will, may stay on the entire time for that period, depending on what's going on. And one of the things that we did, as Joe mentioned today, was we actually had half the class who was physically with the teacher in a classroom compared to the half who are at home, scattered throughout the building, in breakout groups. So, I would be, I was an at-home student and Joe was a in-person student, yet we ended up in the same breakout group to work together collaboratively. And those are the things that we're going to talk to teachers during the PD next week about how they can do that, so we can build that sense of community within the classroom for the students. We also have that voluntary remote learning. Some families are not feeling comfortable having their students come back, and we understand that, with, especially with the uncertainty of things. But, if they choose to do this with their students, they are choosing to be remote learning all five days. They are still enrolling. They are still enrolled in school, in their home school. And they do have that requirement of attendance, like I just talked about, that synchronous learning, that they need to be required to be at that whenever the teacher is asking for it. Students are required to kind of check in each day with their class period, and that's when their attendance will be taken. Parents are making the commitment for 45 school days or roughly a quarter of the year. And then if they want to have their child come back and do the in-person, they have to give notice to the school. There will be some limitations for these students, like a CTE course. Can't really do remote learning five days a week. I'm looking at you, Jerry, you know? A culinary class, a pottery ceramics class. I mean, there are certain classes that are just not going to be able to work, which case schedules would have to be adjusted for those students. Let's see. And then we have the distance learning model. And that would be the idea of us being home full-time. What we did, as Joe said, from March until June was emergency. And we were in school on March 12th and March 13th, we were out, thinking it was going to be for two weeks, and it ended up being till the end of the school year. And the teachers did an amazing job with it. But we need to get ourselves back into that sense of what a school is and the sense of a community within a classroom, which is why we've incorporated so much synchronous learning with our classrooms. If we go to distance learning, that'll still continue. We're looking at kind of those Wednesdays where teachers are going to have those times that everybody is home, so everybody is synchronous. So if we have to go to full distance learning, it's going to look very similar to that. So, you know, high school, middle school and high school, period one, everybody's going to get on. And depending on the class, they may stay on for the entire period or they may stay on for a bit in the beginning and then they may be asked to come back with the teacher afterwards. The teacher may work with a small group for a period of time. They work, the students may be in breakup groups, working together. Elementary will have different times throughout the day, kind of like what they're doing when the kids are home, Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday. So it's that mix of synchronous and asynchronous. And attendance will still be tracked, you know, as it is following state guidelines. We have classroom layouts, as Joe and the principals all mentioned. That furniture has been removed from classrooms and we try to space them out a little bit to try and meet our social distancing requirements. We've added the sneeze guards. All main offices have these sneeze guards. They'll picture in the middle. And then the two other pictures show different sneeze guards that are set up in classrooms. You can see some of the smaller tabletop ones here. And then we have some larger ones for teachers who are more in a standing, that's an art classroom, so a teacher who's more standing than sitting. PPE, that personal protective equipment. Students are required to wear masks at all times when they're in school, except when they're eating, whether that's lunch or snack time. Students are encouraged to bring their mask from home, but if they don't have one, we will have one for them. And there's been a lot of talk about bandanas and gaiters. I don't know if you've heard about it, too, but kind of the feedback on it is that really doesn't give the same protection that a cloth mask or medical mask does. So we're saying those are not permitted to be worn in school. Staff will also be asked and required to wear masks at all times, except when eating again. And staff will be provided the appropriate PPE based on their roles. So some may have some extra PPE if they're dealing with toileting, for example, and things like that. And then, you know, we just ask that you, as Joe said, your patience and flexibility as this is changing minute by minute, day by day. And every time we turn around, we're getting another guideline or something from the State Department of Education asking us to take another look at something. So it took us a little bit to get this out because of the fact that everything was changing so quickly. But I cannot say enough for the team behind me and the secondary instructional leaders who aren't here because it was definitely a team effort to put this together.
Thanks, Sheila.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Does anybody have questions, especially Sheila?
The neck gaiter, the neck gaiter bandana thing, has that been, that's the first time I've heard of it? Has it been clearly communicated to the parents?
I'm not sure how clearly communicated is with parents.
I imagine it's going to be more a problem at the high school than it would be elementary school, but, you know.
Well, and that's where, as principals are putting out their communication over the next week. Make sure that that is definitely included in there as well. As we get more information, you know, this, honestly, that wasn't in here last Thursday.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And then Friday morning, we added it because then that information came out that it's just not as protective for students.
And I guess the uptick of that is when they walk in with it, we have PPE to hand them in place.
Correct, correct. We have enough masks as, I think, between Jack and Joe talked about, for three months.
We're 50,000.
So we, it won't interrupt their learning experience.
No, no, we will, if anyone who comes in with it doesn't have the other, we'll give them one for that day. And just, they can either continue to wear the one that we've given them or they can get some other ones on their own.
Anybody else have questions? Does any of our board members on Zoom have questions?
Nick does.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying no. I'm saying good job, everyone.
I believe the individual schools have also put in their, some of their, because they're going to follow up this tonight with school-specific information. A lot of what Sheila showed was, you know, sample schedules. They're going to have, they're going to send that information out. And I believe a lot of the schools have also, we talked about, Jeff, I heard your question about the gaiters, the gaiters and the bandanas. I think that was included in some of that, in some of those communications to go out that we're not going to do that. So, and that's something we'll have to continue to stress as we move forward. I just, Bob, did you have that up on the TV? Because I understand that there was no callers so far. And I know we're getting ready to go to public participation, but I just want to make sure people, if they didn't see the agenda and didn't know how to participate, I just put it up there now.
Does anybody else have any questions? Since we'll give, I guess, callers a few minutes in case they did not know how to call in. Alan?
How would like co-teaching work via video?
Co-teaching?
Yeah. You guys do, Darlene was saying you guys do like co-teaching model?
We will have, on the day that there's no distance learning, if they'll have been under a special teaching, teacher with the teacher, they'll support the teacher outside of the classroom. But I think it's, it's better, time better used if the program manager, especially the teaching teacher, can use individually, with those small groups to work on it.
They'll do that via Zoom or whatever platform you're using?
Right.
Okay.
If it's a day where they're home, yes.
Right.
And we do have parents who support, and we do that in large groups where they're outside of the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we will move on to public participation. Bob, did anybody call in? All right. Then we will move on to old.
And we know that's working because Ryan called in before. Yep, okay.
All right, we will move on to old business, which we have none. So next we'll move on to item 10, which is new business. And first up is policy first review. And this is a new policy that our policy committee worked on called COVID Policy Number 6114 dot eight. George or?
Getting the policy for disaster preparedness in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. To the board, felt necessary, the policy committee felt necessary to draft a policy to deal with these types of epidemics. So this is not specific to COVID-19. It's more of a generalized policy around how the district deals with epidemics, pandemics. And it speaks, it's borrowed from some direction by CAVE in this area and allows for things such as how the superintendent can deal with it, what his or her rules and responsibilities are, the powers granted there. Protocol for students and staff suspected of having the disease charges the superintendent with determining the closing or reopening of schools. So basically, it's policy around how we deal with something like this and how we adhere to public health and CDC guidelines.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions with regard to this policy? This is a first review. This policy will be up for a second review with vote anticipated at our next meeting. All right, anybody at home, I mean, at Zoom, have questions on these? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to item B, which is we have three memorandums of understanding with some of our bargaining units and all of them are going to be vote anticipated. So the first draft motion is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Monroe Board of Education Nurses Bargaining Unit in reference to furlough days for the 2021 school year as presented. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Joe, do you want to just talk about that briefly?
Yeah, I guess I'll thank each group individually. I'll start here with the nurses. The nurses have agreed to accept two furlough days. So again, every bargaining unit so far, a number of bargaining units, we're still negotiating with some. But, you know, a number of staff, you know, starting with the teachers and the administrators, had agreed to some sort of concessions, and this was the nurses' concession of two furlough days.
Does anybody have any questions on this one? All right, hearing none, we have a motion by Jeff, a second by David, to approve the MOU between the Board and the Nurses Bargaining Unit for reference to the furlough days. All in favor? Everybody, okay? And they're all ayes to, Diane, on Zoom? Thank you, motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the BOE and the Para Educators Bargaining Unit. I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Monroe Board of Education Para Educators Bargaining Unit in reference to furlough days for the 2021 school year as presented. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Joe, do you want?
Just like I thanked the nurses, I want to thank the para educators. This memorandum of understanding reflects a one-day furlough day, but please understand it's actually a three-day furlough day. Their contract reads that they work the student days. So the fact that we had already shortened the school year from 182 to 180 days had already impacted them two days. So they had a de facto two-day furlough. And then this gives them the third day to put them in line with the teachers and administrators. So once again, thank you to the para group.
Great. Do I have any questions on this one? All right, hearing none, I have a motion by Jeff, a second by Jerry, to approve the MOU between the Board of Education and the Board of Education Para Educators Bargaining Unit in reference to the furlough days. All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Zoom, everybody is an aye? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right, the number, item number three, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Monroe Board of Education Librarians Bargain Unit in reference to furlough days for the 2021 school year as presented. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry.
Ditto on this one, too. I got another, another group here. Our two librarians, you know, in the spirit of giving with the rest of the, the rest of the district agreed to a three-day, three days of furloughs for the librarians. So I thank, I thank them both as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this one? All right, hearing none, I have a motion by Jeff, a second by Jerry, to approve the MOU between the Board and the Librarians Bargain Unit for three furlough days as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, Zoom is all ayes there, too. So motion passes unanimously. Up next is item C, which is the discussion and possible action on successor maintenance security contract. Do I have a motion to approve the successor maintenance security contract as presented? Thank you, David. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff.
I want to thank the maintenance team for, you know, coming to the table and really giving in, you know, at this time, you know, like the other groups. They're, this is an agreement for a successor contract. They agreed to take a 0% increase for year one, maintain the current premium cost share percentage in year one, going up to 3% in year two and maintaining the same premium cost share. It's a two-year successor contract. It was not a full-blown negotiation, but it puts them off schedule with the other groups, too, which I know has been, you know, one of our goals as well.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? This was one of our bargaining units that contract expired on June 30th, 2020, that we were supposed to negotiate with. And instead of doing a full negotiation, we just did a successor agreement for two years with them. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Zoom is all unanimous, so that contract is unanimous. We are still in, we are about to start, as Joe mentioned early, the administrators. They are up towards the end of this month to start bargaining their contract. Theirs works a little differently than the rest. Their contract is not up until June 30th, 2021. But like the teachers, you negotiated this far in advance to take place next year. We are still in negotiations with the secretary's unit. Their contract was up June 30th, 2020. So currently, we're in negotiations with them, but their contract is actually expired. So, so we will have more to come on those two in the coming weeks. And I would think that since we've approved these our next meeting, we could probably move forth and approve the rest of the items on our 2021 budget that we have remaining and outstanding.
I hope so.
I mean, we'll still have something because we don't know what the, we might not know what the secretary is, but we should be able to at least get the overwhelming majority of that tied up so that we can put most of that into bed and the finance team can do all the changes that are necessary for that. So I think we should shoot for that for our next meeting. Does anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment? Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. Great meeting tonight, all in favor? Motion passes. They are all yeses, Diane.